I don't need your phone number. Does your last name okay, or if you don't want to put that?
Not to the best of my knowledge.
You don't have to put your email. Just your name, yeah, and are you like where you live? Whether it's a starting, whatever.
I think that went back to Fort Worth's rule that he had in, but it's not in place.
And then just tell me what you're going to be speaking on.
Kerry Griffin, yep. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's county council meeting. We are starting off tonight with an invocation from Pastor Patty Gruber from St. John's United Church of Christ in Weldon Spring. It's not Patty. Sorry. It is Pat, not Patty. My bad. That would be really bad if I just did that. So, thank you. And Councilman Joe Brazel is going to lead us on our Pledge of Allegiance after that. Pastor Pat, would you please lead us in a prayer? Yes, sir. Makes it much easier to give.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. I feel honored to be asked to be here tonight. Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we do thank you for calling us together this evening, this wonderful weather that we have been experiencing. We thank you for the people that you have called into leadership positions within this county that we call home. We pray that decisions made tonight would be guided by your still small voice, that we may better listen and discern your will for all the people here living amongst this county, our neighbors. We pray all this in Jesus' precious and holy name. Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Pastor Pat, again, I apologize for that. It's good to get the mistakes out early. That way, the bar is already set. With that, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Swanson.
Here, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel.
Here.
Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilman Elam.
Here.
Councilman Hollander.
Councilwoman York.
Here.
Councilman Baker.
Here.
Welcome, Councilwoman York, back in person. It's good to see you. That's very good. We've got a big evening tonight. We're doing two public presentations. We are going to start off Scott Grochnick, Scott Drochnick. Boy, this is going to be themed tonight, isn't it? He is the president and CEO of the Economic Development Council of St. Charles County. He has a presentation. They just wrapped up a five-year report, and I've gotten the opportunity to see it at the St. Charles Regional Chamber last week. So, excited to hear your presentation, Scott. And the guys in the back should be queued up and all ready for you.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. County Council and folks, it's good to be here. Thank you so much. Good to see Steve. Thank you again for hiring me a couple of years ago.
A couple.
Well, twenty, well, almost ten now. And Rory, thank you for loaning me that tie when I needed it the most. We've got a presentation, if I could, that I'll take you through on our economic development plan. That's come to us after working with a consultant. But as we talk about economic development, as we talk about growth and the things that it impacts in the community, I know that that can be a controversial topic for some folks. Hopefully, not many in the crowd. But to get things started on the right note, something that I think we could all agree with, and that is that we're looking forward to opening day, and this is my cute little dog named Dozer. So, Dozer's a cool little guy. He's got elbows. I think I saw a smile on Joe Brazel's face. So, a week ago, we were in four-degree temperature with wind chill. Today, it's in the 50s and 60s. But let's all root for the cards and hope for the best. So, with that said, one quick slide to talk about the EDC, and I thank you so much for the longstanding partnership that we've had with the county and all the local governments for decades. But just a quick overview of last year. There were a number of key attraction and retention expansion projects we were part of. General Mills in St. Charles, Sync Thermal in O'Fallon, Clement Ford in the unincorporated county, and CIS leasing in Weldon Spring. All told, this is about $50 million or more, and several hundred dollars, excuse me, hundreds of jobs that came to the area through the efforts that either we led or we supported to bring things about. Twelve loans last year, almost $20 million in total investment happening through those loans. Incubator success. We had a 99% occupancy level last year, along with three graduations and a number of new tenants. We were able to bring back the new Small Business Counselor Program that we had for a number of years. The grant went away. We couldn't find the right person. We did for 2004, and Louis hit it out of the park. And you can see over 100 business clients served, some 33 startup companies, and over 500 hours of counseling provided to those, and lots of other things that came out of it. And then last year was a record-setting year for Mo Cowbell. We actually had one Guinness record set by a young man who was completing one half marathon in all 50 states. He has Down Syndrome. The last state he had to work in to do that was here in Missouri. He chose Mo Cowbell, and so that brought some special attention. But even beyond that, over 5,400 folks running in the race, and thousands more coming to shop, cheer, et cetera. So, good things happening with that. And then last year, we gave out $20,000 in STEM classroom grants. This year, it'll be that, if not more, because we have the annual Randy Schilling Classroom Grant that happens. And this year, Dr. Dubre has stepped up, and for two years in a row as a pilot project, he's donating $10,000 for a new STEAM grant. So, at the March 7th celebration, as we honor 19 students achieving in STEM, we'll be giving out the Randy Schilling STEM grant, and we will begin with the very first Dr. Dubre STEAM grant, so making a big impact in the area. Going forward, just wanted to tell you about the study that we undertook. This was through a grant that was a matching grant from the EDA. It was an 80/20 grant. It was almost two years to get us to the point of this study happening and being completed. It grew out of some stuff in our, one of our committees, strategic initiatives. On that committee is Larry Dobrowski, and Larry specifically said, hey, we need a strategic plan for the community. We have the master plan, but we need one on economic development. And some years ago, the EDC had undertaken an organizational strategic plan, but that was separate than how did we want to focus and do growth in the community. And then additional member on our committee is Sean Mullins from the World Trade Center, St. Louis. And he said, you know, the EDA might have some funding available. Now, whether that's going to happen under the new Doze regime, that's another question, but at least it was there. We were able to apply for it. St. Charles County qualified for it because of all of the impact that had happened during the flood of 2022, over $127 million of disaster happening in our area and rebuilding. And so, this was part of a resilience plan of how do we move forward as an economy? Three reports came out of it. One was workforce development. Another was a competitive peer study against us and some peers. And then the final blueprint for success, which is the main one in the middle. With your indulgence, I'll take you through some of the recommendations that are there and happily answer some questions. First off, we went out to bid. We received 13 bids from around the country. The group that ended up scoring the best and was chosen by our executive committee and ratified by our full board was out of Atlanta, Jay Garner with Garner Economics. Jay Garner is a leader in an industry called site selectors. These are the secret shoppers of economic development. They are hired by mid-level and higher-level companies and sometimes international firms to decide where should they build their next office, their next manufacturing plant, their next distribution area. And so, Jay actually helped start the national organization called the Site Selectors Guild. He was their founding president. He's also a past president of the International Economic Development Council. And when there are site selection conferences to talk about growth and plans and where the economy going, Jay is one of those key speakers that's relied on. So, when we got him, we got somebody that was really going to have a hard look and give us some real truth on how to look at things in St. Charles County and going forward. I love the quote we have up at the top, which is from him. Every time we put his name on social media, it doubles or triples our impressions. But he said, "St. Charles County is Missouri's economic star." County Executive Ellman had a chance to interact with him several occasions, and Jay, in front of the governor's conference, in front of hundreds of leaders around the state last September, stood there and said, "St. Charles County is the best-growing place that you've got in the state of Missouri." There we go. And I think I almost saw another smile from Councilmember Brazel, but I could be wrong. I'm just checking. And Arnie, are you getting my good side as you video back there? Okay, thank you, sir. Just checking. So, we benchmarked against a number of peer communities, St. Louis County, metro area, the state of Missouri. But then we picked some areas that are collar counties outside metropolitan locations that have growth patterns similar to us, specifically one outside of North Carolina in the Charlotte area, another outside of Kansas City, outside of Indianapolis, and then outside of Nashville. And so, what I want to tell you is that when it comes to us compared to St. Louis County, St. Louis City, or the state of Missouri, we're pretty hot stuff. We are pretty hot stuff. But when you compare us to some of our peers in Kansas City, in Indianapolis, in Charlotte, in Nashville, we are paling compared to the growth and the things that they are seeing. Now, maybe we could have picked other areas, but we didn't do this to find something that would complement us, but that would give us some suggestions. So, where we are excited about the growth levels that are happening, and it has come down. We used to have 10,000 people a year moving in. It went down to five. Now, we're down to about 2,000 or so thousand per year moving into St. Charles County. And that's at about a 3% or so growth rate. These areas are seeing a 10% growth rate. Now, I don't know where they're at in their life cycle. Our growth rate's been exploding since the 80s. But compared to those other areas, we are not growing as well as we should have. And we all know the situation that metropolitan St. Louis is in, where we are in a demographic winter, where there are more people dying than being born, and our population, if they're not moving west, they are moving away. And so, that is an issue for us that employers look at when they consider where to invest or where to put the next caboose in the wine country area. Now, a couple of the benchmarks that he came up with, and I love that. I love that caboose. I think that's awesome. What was that for?
What is it going to be for?
Yes, sir.
It's going to be, I think, a visitor's center. We haven't decided yet.
I love that. See, that's the kind of thing that makes us special and unique. So, congrats on that.
That was all volunteers.
Was it?
Hundred percent.
Including the crane?
And the crane, the trucks. The Blackleys gave it to us. That cost us a penny.
I love how people come together for that kind of thing. That's good. Here are some benchmarks that he gave us. We all know what's going on, population and growth and jobs. But where he said we have challenges, no surprise, but an unfortunate reality, the St. Louis regional crime rate. Now, we'd like to say it's the city or the county across the river, but that's not how the rest of the world looks at it. We get painted with that brush. And the unfortunate reality that I've said in other places, and I'll say it again, even as we're on public record, the city of St. Louis is in the top 10 for most violent and murder places in the U.S. And meanwhile, 20 minutes away in the city of O'Fallon, we're in the top 10 for one of the safest places to live in the U.S. We have got a horrible contrast that is not a good thing. And so, as we deal with this, as we try to deal with it, as we look at it, it's a problem that taints us when we try to promote ourselves in other places. There's also a lack of diversity, and specifically, they were talking about U.S. citizens who are foreign-born or who have immigrated here to invest and start companies compared to our peers. There's also, we have always talked about, Mike and I and others, it's in the 60s, I believe it's 64%. 64% of our well-trained, highly-skilled workers commute out of St. Charles County on those beautiful bridges that we built to go work in West County, in Westport, in Clayton, downtown, and other places. I've been saying, since I worked for the county and before, I want them back here. I want those jobs here. We are trading workers, white-collar to there and blue-collar here, and we've got to find a way to change that imbalance. Lack of public transportation, not a big story there, but of course, affordable and available housing. And if anybody doubts that, I've got two millennials in my attic that I will sell you on a cheap note if I can move them out to somewhere else, including the caboose in Augusta or Defiance or wherever it is. Now, on our business targets, we before had stuff that was called NAICS codes. These are federal codes that are used to determine what kind of business you are. So, maybe you fall in manufacturing, or maybe you fall in professional services, or maybe it's IT, or whatever the case. He said, "Do away with that. Come up with these business clusters that you need to focus on." A couple that are quite interesting. One is called intersection of innovation. Now, what in the world does that mean? Where's Kevin Colleen? Can we get this on T-shirts somewhere or something? There is. Intersection of innovation. I don't know what that means, but it literally, as you see the breakout, talks about IT, talks about 3D printing, talks about engineering, talks about GIS technology, health tech, clean tech, and data centers and other things. Manufacturing continues to be strong and growing in St. Charles County. And hopefully, under the new administration, state and federal, we will see even more reshoring and more manufacturing because we need to make things here. I know we learned a lot of lessons under COVID. One of them is we cannot rely on importing essential things that we need from overseas, whether it's medicine, or medical supplies, or rare earth minerals, or whatever the case may be. But then lastly, there's a new area that's been added to us, per the consultant, and that is quality of place sports tourism. Again, I look at Joe. He's been talking about tourism for years. If you have never seen it before, the Super Bowl, everybody loved the Super Bowl, right? A few people. Anybody happy with the outcome of the Super Bowl? Okay. Not I, but maybe others were. The Super Bowl generates about $5 billion per game. Every year, youth sports, outdoor sports, generates over $535 billion per year. And so, Jay was saying, as your area, through the family arena, through the trails, through whatever the convention and sports facility is working on, and other things that are out there, try to capture more of that. Not the kids playing in Overland to come play the Maryland Heights kids versus O'Fallon, but become a Midwestern destination, a national destination, an international destination for sports tourism to come and play indoor, outdoor, et cetera, et cetera. And I love tourism because it's like being a grandparent. You only have them for a little while, and then you get to send them back home, wherever they belong. And so, you don't have to deal with those long-term costs. But this is a new area, and we're seeing more discussion about mixed-use development in the county, and it's been talked about in the master plan for years. But now that mixed-use development, rather than big-box retail, is focusing on destination, restaurants, and indoor/outdoor sports, like chicken and pickle and other things as well. So, here you can see some of those numbers. I think it'll be interesting to figure out what the Convention and Sports Facilities Authority is going to come up with. I don't know where that's at, but meanwhile, other plans are moving forward. The city of O'Fallon has announced a new indoor/outdoor mixed-use thing at Bryan Road and 70, and there could be other plans that are out there as well. And of course, we think Cowbell is a good example of bringing folks here, four countries, almost every state, thousands of folks coming to the area. And we see that all the time with the festivals and things that are so prevalent down in historic St. Charles after the work of many folks over time. Somebody has also mentioned this. Anybody have kids in sports? They say that the average family with a child in sports spends at least $1,000 per child, per sport, per season. And when I throw that number out, yeah, that's what I get, a lot higher. How can we capture even more of that? Mike, what are you guys spending on all that hockey stuff? Too much. If only it could be deductible. You got a senior deduction. Can we do a sports deduction for people over 62 in St. Charles County?
That's part of Michelle's presentation right there.
Oh, I should have gone second. Okay, so, finally, some key recommendations about people, product, and place. And let me tell you, with the 31-member board that we have at the EDC, I guarantee there's at least one, if not more, board member who doesn't like one or more of these recommendations. But this is what happens when you hire somebody from outside with expertise to come in and tell you they're on Varnis Truth, rather than just locking me in a room with a computer for five hours, turning off my phone, and ask me to write up what everybody would like to see. So, the first thing was in regards to the fact that we have a number of sites in the area that need to be identified, and we need to do a better job of marketing those sites, but dealing with some of the infrastructure issues that are out there. We are quickly running out of land. That doesn't mean we pave everything everywhere, but we are running out of big tracts of land, and we're running out of opportunities for a variety of things. That leads us to some redevelopment chances. What will Mid Rivers Mall be like in 10 years from now? I doubt it'll be what we see today, and other things as well. But he has asked us to do a deeper dive, probably with an engineering or site-selection firm, to look and identify some of the gaps that are there. We have lost projects because sometimes we have the land, but we don't have the water or the wastewater infrastructure in place, or a plan to get it there in time for the project. One of those projects, we lost. We were down to us and Crystal City. Crystal City beat us out on the James Hardy Siding Distribution and Manufacturing Facility. $400 million, 200 jobs, 70,000 per person, because we couldn't figure out water, wastewater, to get it to the location they liked in our community. I don't like losing to Crystal City. Texas is one thing. Crystal City, something else. Number two, in terms of entrepreneurial ecosystem, one of the key recommendations is that we come up with an angel investor fund just for St. Charles County. We've got them in the metro area. You've got them downtown. You've got them at Cortex or T-Rex. But let's do that to help the entrepreneurs in St. Charles County, because 80% of our growth is going to be the local entrepreneurs that are here. We have incubation. We have counseling. We have loans. But we don't have any angel investing funds that could prove themselves out over time. Third thing, and this one I know is really going to make everybody smile. They're saying we need more housing in St. Charles County. Ideally, he said, "Housing at every price." I'm seeing that smirk. I'm seeing that smirk. They didn't pinpoint any area, Joe, on the map. They said, "Housing at every price point, including executive housing, but in general," and I like what the county executive said the other day at the mayor administrators meeting, "we lack starter housing." Again, I've got two kids living upstairs. If you are a single adult making 50, 60,000, or if you're a single parent making 50, 60,000, or if you're a nurse, or if you're a teacher, or if you're a police officer, or if you're a frontline worker at a warehouse or manufacturing, try to find housing that only eats up 30% of your income when you make 50 or 60,000. It is a challenge. It is a challenge. And that's one that he wants us to be talking about for quite some time, because I think we want to have all price points where possible in consolidation with the land use planning and zoning. But I first came to St. Charles County, we lived in an apartment, because that's all we could afford. And then eventually, we were able to buy a house. And we've got that same thing, because I want my kids and I want my grandkids to be out here. And so, I don't know whether it should be 10% of our total housing stock is starter, or 5%, or 20%. That's maybe master plan and consultants to figure out. But it's getting harder and harder to find a home under 200,000, sometimes even under 300,000 that doesn't need a lot of fixing up anywhere in the community. This other one has a really cool graphic. I'm not going to go into it, but it's in regards to the workforce delivery system. He was blown away. They were blown away by the cooperation, the work between the K-12 programs, the training, the businesses, the apprenticeship programs, the STEM programs, the CAP programs in Rankin, and what the community college is building. But they wanted us to make sure that we keep getting employers at the table with the trainers, not every couple of years, not even once a year, more than once a year, to talk about the needs that those businesses have, because if we're using curriculum that's two, three, four years old, and that's not turning out the students that we need, whether in welding, or IT, or healthcare, that's a problem. So, he was really saying, "Let's all make sure we keep that curriculum up to date, whether they're going through an apprenticeship, or a certification, or technical training, or a bachelor's, or an associate's, or whatever the case may be." Number five, sustainable funding for economic development infrastructure. He loved the road board idea, and he said, "You might think about something like that for some of these water/wastewater fund issues. Maybe there could be some forward funding, and then it gets paid back. But how do you bring some of this land to market?" Number six is one about a capital campaign in terms of the EDC. I'd like to take our five-year plan and go out and raise sponsors to help us do it. We get wonderful support from local government. It makes up 10% of our budget. But I think we can get more folks around the table when we say, "Here's our plan. Here's what we're trying to do. And here's the value we give back." I know our peers across the river, Councilman Holder and others, will say, "Hey, we got to give Rodney and everybody four, five, six million bucks, a million dollars a year. How does the county get away with only giving you 100,000 and getting these kind of returns?" Well, that's a different story. But we'd like to raise additional funding from the business community and others that would support these efforts going forward. They talked about black swan scenario crisis planning. When I had the opportunity and the privilege to work for the county, I sat in a lot of emergency planning-type things. What happens if a pipeline ruptures? What happens if there's an earthquake? What happens if a tornado hits? Who's in response? Who's in charge? Well, we need to do that in terms of the parts of the economy that could go south at a moment's notice. I remember in 2008, we didn't know if General Motors was going to close and leave Wentzville. We didn't know if Citigroup, with all the mortgages going crazy, was going to close up and leave O'Fallon. We didn't know if we were about to have five, or six, or 10,000 employees plus additional ripple effects going through our community. He's saying, "Don't wait to react. Take some time to walk through that now and figure out how it's going to be dealt with." There's also talk about being more proactive in FDI, which is Foreign Direct Investment. But I'll be honest, I don't know who our friends are today, and I'm not sure they'll be the same ones that we've got tomorrow. So, I'm reading the same headlines that you are, the same threads and Xs and Twitters and whatever they call them. But I know we live in a volatile world, and in the past, we have good, we've had good relations with the Canadians, with the Japanese, with the French, with the Germans, with the Brits, and others. And I think we want to try to continue to do that, because our goal isn't just to make stuff and sell it here, but as capitalists, we want to sell our goods and services around the world. And then lastly, let me leave you with this high praise again from Jay, who is a preeminent site selector. Said, "With excellent transportation assets, strong manufacturing presence, robust population growth, diverse natural resources, and effective public and private leadership, St. Charles County has a wealth of amenities that make it an ideal location for investment." We've won him over. You, and all that you have done at the county level in cooperation with the cities and the chambers and the businesses, have done a great thing. People see what we're doing, and we're getting attention regionally, nationally, and even internationally. So, thank you for giving me a chance to bore you a little bit with some of our strategic plan. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or say something that would make Joe smile a third time tonight, if it's possible.
He smiled more tonight than he has in a while. Any questions for anybody?
Has anybody figured out why the population is, people moving out here has changed?
Part of it is.
Did they talk at all about that, or was that anything?
To a small degree. And we've had other folks come in. There's Dr. Ness Sandoval from the University of St. Louis. If you've not had him out to, I don't know if you have. Okay.
We haven't, but he hasn't been here.
Right.
But he's been making the tour at the chambers.
So, people are leaving the region. People are waiting longer to get married. They're waiting longer or not even having kids. I just celebrated our 40th anniversary, my wife and I. Our kids are almost where we were at 10 or 15 years into our marriage, and they're not even married yet. They don't even have serious girlfriends. So, people are waiting longer to have children. So, the birth rates are down. The death rates are up. We used to say 10,000 boomers a day were retiring in the U.S. Now, we're at 10,000 boomers a day dying in the U.S. So, folks are leaving the area because of crime. The population is dwindling. It is coming here, but it's sort of like folks are coming our way to get off the Titanic. That is growth for us, but it's not net new growth for the region. So, I don't have any thoughts on how to increase the population in terms of procreation. That's a different story. But we've got a procreation issue. We've got a death issue, and we've got a crime issue that's scaring people away.
Any other questions?
I just want to say, thanks, Scott. That was an excellent presentation. I really enjoyed it.
It's good to see you again, buddy. We used to work so well at St. Peter's. It's been years ago.
Yeah, a lot of years.
Mr. Mason, would you mind sharing that presentation with us, emailing it to us?
I've sent it off to Mike.
We have it. So, we'll share it with everybody on the council.
Okay. That way, I can review it later on and then give you a call.
And I'd be happy to give you some additional materials. There's probably 150 pages in all three reports. This is about 30 slides, but happy to talk further at any point.
I appreciate it, Scott.
Thank you all.
Excellent. Scott, thanks very much. We appreciate the time.
Joe, thank you for smiling, and congrats on the caboose.
With that, we'll move on to our second presentation, and our county collector, Michelle McBride. The Senior Tax Freeze. The senior tax freeze kicks into high gear for people to file, starting in just a few days, so-
Yes, it does.
Michelle, to kind of talk about it, we're getting the emails, we're getting the phone calls whenever you're out and about in the community. People have strong feelings about this. And I think we were the first county in Missouri to approve this. If we weren't first, we were definitely in the-
We were definitely the first county to start taking applications.
Yes.
I don't know if we were the first one to approve a program, but we were definitely the first one to actually implement a program.
But I think it's good to remind folks that when the state legislature approved this, it did not come with a roadmap. So they approved a concept, as I called it, a half-baked pie, that they handed off to the counties of Missouri. And I believe Mr. Swanson said when it first came up, we're the third largest county in Missouri, we should lead the way in this. And Michelle has done a great job of navigating this. And I credit you very much because you had no roadmap. And you really had to start putting this together. And I think a lot of people in the state are following what you're doing. But I remind people, when they get frustrated, there was no roadmap. So you are literally figuring this out as we go, based on a lot of the rules that got put in place by the state legislature that you have to stay within. Whether they make sense or not, you still have to play within those. So thanks for coming tonight, and I look forward to seeing what you've got to say.
Well, a lot of people are looking forward to opening day of the Cardinals, and I agree with that. And a lot of people are looking forward to opening day of the senior tax relief.
I agree with that.
We're getting the calls, we're getting the, yes, the comments. So what some people may or may not realize, and I'm going to put several different things up here, is that currently, in the county administration building, there is an HVAC replacement going on. And that is currently affecting the first floor. So while the program opens on March 1st, which is a Saturday, and the county is closed on Saturday, the online site will definitely go live at 12:01 a.m. on March 1st. But this is kind of a map of what's all affected on the first floor. So all of these different colors and dates are what's happening. And the collector's office starts getting affected. Well, our back room was affected already, and that ends on Friday. And then the front receptionist desk in the lobby of the admin building gets affected next week, which would be opening time period for this. So what we've done is we've got a, I'm calling it the rollout. And let's see if I can get this in the right direction. Yes, okay. So obviously, the program opens on March 1st. And that's a Saturday, the site will go live. People can apply online, people can renew online, March 1st. March 3rd through 7th, because of the HVAC replacement and the displacement of offices and employees, we will have drop-off service only. We'll have the special drop box in the lobby. We've got the drive-up drop box on Monroe Street. If the only thing somebody needs for their renewal is a notary, we will have notary services that week. But there won't be any personal attention to applications that week, other than notarizing signature. March 10th, we will reopen the service center in room 115. In that service center, we will have tables, we will sit down, we will assist people with filling out their application. The recorder will have employees in that room, so you don't have to leave the service center, go get your copy of your deed. You're just going to go right to the recorder in that same service center area. So we're going to be doing that 8:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, starting March 10th. I do want to remind people, applications, the application period is open through June 30th. Do not feel like you need to be there on March 10th. In fact, if you don't want to deal with a lot of mess because of all the things going on, wait till about mid-April. And then, if you're going to wait that long, and you don't like parking down in St. Charles, starting on Wednesdays after the municipal election, on April 16th will be the first Wednesday, we're going to move the service center staff out to the absentee voting area of the Election Authority. That will be on Wednesdays only, starting on April 16th and every Wednesday, then through, I believe it's June, whatever I have on here, June 18th. So then on Wednesdays, there won't be a service center at the county admin building because all the staff will be out at the Election Authority, who services the senior tax relief project. So last year, one of our big complaints was obviously parking. There's not good parking down here in the city of St. Charles. So anybody who's got it completed and just needs to drop it off, I suggest stay in your car, drive up to the drop box on Monroe Street, put it in. Because you don't even have to get out of the car. If you're going to come into the service center area, that'll be open March 10th. It opens at 8:30 because our staff has to come in, they have to clock in, they have to get things ready. And it will close at 4:30, for the same reasons. They got to clock out, they got to get their stuff put up. So that's why we do 8:30 to 4:30. So if you're choosing to get in line at 6:30 in the morning, you're choosing to put yourself in a line that you know is not going to move till 8:30. So if you talk to people, highly encourage them to wait till the service center is open. You know, if you want to come down that early to get a parking spot, I get it. But stay in your car. There's no reason to stand outside on the sidewalk. You know, it's, it is what it is. We've got so many people, we're telling you the time, we're telling you when we'll be there. Don't come early and then complain because you're there before the service center is open. And we're trying to address the parking issue. And we're trying this at the Election Authority, just with Wednesdays this year. We'll see how that works. They have a municipal election, so we can't start any sooner than mid-April because that absentee voting area will be used for what it's designed for, absentee voting. We will have family arena staff in the lobby again to direct people to the service center. That'll start again on March 10th. Basically, instead of thinking about March 1 as opening day, I'd like people to kind of add a zero behind that. Because with the HVAC and the relocation of different offices and staff members, really, if you can get in your head, March 10th, that's going to be a much better day. That's being honest and upfront with everybody. I think that's very important. And you know, if parking is an issue for you, wait till those Wednesdays when we're out at the Election Authority. If your property is titled to a trust and you're a new applicant, you can make, and we, we highly encourage making an appointment. Because trusts take us a little longer to look through. And if you're not comfortable submitting your trust through the online site, it will prompt you to click here to make an appointment. And then those appointments will be Monday through Friday. If they fall on those Wednesdays when we're at the Election Authority, they will be out there. Otherwise, they will be down at the admin building. And you will pick your time for your appointment. We're not going to assign your appointment time. But if your property is titled to a trust, that's where those appointments are far. Because it's going to take longer for those applications to be processed through. The other ones, you come in, you'll get a number, you'll wait your turn, and go. Questions?
Anybody have questions?
I do.
Yes.
Is it easiest to do online? It sounds like you don't have to wait in lines and all that kind of thing.
If you are a person comfortable doing online, you are clicking radio buttons that say, you know, yes, I was over 62 on January 1st. You're typing in your address, you're typing in your account number, which is on your real estate tax bill. You're typing in your name, your birthday. The online, we have designed as simple as we can. The paper is a single front page. The thing with you, the online applications, is if your property is titled in your own name, there's two attachments you're going to make. One is going to be a copy of your driver's license, which is proof of your identity and proof of your date of birth. The second one is going to be your deed, your ownership deed, showing that it is titled to you, and you are the rightful owner. If your property is titled to a trust and you're applying online, then you need to attach your trust documents. If you're not comfortable attaching a trust document, that's when you have the opportunity to schedule an appointment and have your trust document looked at in person, go right back out the door with it.
We did it online, and it was very easy.
Good.
The second one is that, does everybody have to reapply this year? Or if you've done it last year, is it, you go through the whole process again?
If you qualified last year in your real estate tax bill for 2024, you would have received a yellow renewal form. So if you didn't receive the yellow renewal form, you didn't qualify last year. So if you receive this yellow renewal form, basically, you're filling out the blanks, you're signing and getting your signature notarized. And that's how simple renewal is. There are no attachments. Yeah.
Can you do that online, or does it-
You can renew online. You're going to be signing and certifying to certain things, too.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
If you, if you do it online, I assume there's no notary required?
At this time, we're not requiring electronic notary.
Okay. Steve?
Yeah, Michelle, do they know what you just said? That if they didn't get that, they have to reapply?
Everybody has to-
I've had people tell me they never heard anything back. Okay, now that was before you sent those out. My wife saw it, I didn't. Okay? But if somebody that saw that obviously knows what to do. But if it wasn't in there, is there, was there something said? If you didn't get a yellow thing along with this, then you have to go reapply?
Everybody has to apply. So what I don't want people to think is when we say-
No, no, everybody has to reapply.
Everybody either has to-
Everybody has to reapply, but if they haven't applied-
Renew, or they have to apply. So we're either getting new applications, or we're getting renewal forms.
Yeah, but if you, if you didn't get that in your, how do you know what to do?
Somebody who could have renewed but submits a new application won't have any problems.
No, 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 I'm saying-
Somebody who attempts to renew-
I'm just saying, there's two groups of people. There's people who got a copy of that in there, and when they read it, they, oh yeah, this means I'm in good shape, I just need to reapply. People who didn't get that, do they then know that if they applied earlier, it didn't go through? Or maybe they just didn't apply? But if they did apply, how do they know to look for their, their yellow piece of paper? Because like I said, if that's the only thing, we didn't actually go send, we didn't communicate with people in saying-
We did send out notifications.
Pardon me?
We did send out notifications. There was an acknowledgement, and there will be an acknowledgement in an online application or renewal form submitted. We also sent out approved and denied notices to people.
Okay.
They came from noreply@scmo.org. Some people, after they contacted us and we shared that, they went searching for them, they go, oh yeah, I found that now. Some people just-
Okay, well, I need to look, I didn't, I never saw mine, so I need to look for it. You're saying it would be-
Check your spam folder.
Unless you have your spam folder automatically deleted for so long.
Check your spam folder. If something comes sometimes from no reply, a lot of times, it will end up in your spam folder. Because we just, I just had a lady a couple of council meetings ago who said, I never got anything, we never heard anything. And once we found out that, we gave her the address. She went back and searched, and it was in her spam folder a number of months ago.
I didn't apply the last day, so I didn't expect to get it. I figured if I got it, everybody else got it.
We did send them out, and we will send them out.
I'll look, and I'll call you if I can find it.
Okay. And if people, if people come to the service center, we can tell if they should be a renewal or a new applicant. In fact, if somebody goes online and tries to renew and puts in their account number, it'll tell them you're not eligible, if they're not eligible, because there's a whole thing in the background that looks back to see-
Okay.
If they've been approved or not.
And then the other thing, I think you already said, was that, was that people that apply online do not need to get a notary?
Right. I mean, there are electronic notarizations available, but at this point, we're not requiring that.
I think that's great. And, and the people who do come here, will we have notaries available like we did last year?
Yes, we will.
Okay, great.
Yes.
So that brings up the question that I had. Do you have enough staff to be able to handle this? I mean, do you have enough notaries and-
We have approval for enough staff. We're trying to get the positions filled.
Okay.
So right now, we're going to be pulling from some of our main staff. We are, HR is actively accepting applications for us. They are trying to certify candidates for us. We are looking through the applications. We have three members of my staff in the notary process right now. We're waiting for, the state has approved two of them. We're waiting for their journals and their seals. I have another one in my office right now who can help us in the meantime. So yes, that would be another reason, highly encouraging, mid-April. Because construction, staffing, all of those things, as much as we try, we've had job postings up since January. You can't hire people if they don't apply.
So your service center is what we're calling it? That's room 115?
Correct.
Of the administration building?
Correct.
So when they first come in, turn to the left, go around the corner? No?
There's no corner. You just come in, go left, straight in.
Okay, it's the first building right there?
Yes.
Okay. Any other, yes?
I'm assuming you already have something that's going to be posted at a website of what to do, step-by-step for people to walk through? Either a video, a tutorial, something?
Communications has stuff up there already. We, on the back of the application form, if somebody goes to the website to get the paper application form, the back will say, if your property is titled to a trust, do this, this, and this. If property is titled in your name, do this, this, and this. I could talk to communications about a short video.
Because I would highly suggest a video, because that way, with looking at a lot of our population, they can pause it, be like, all right, now I have this, what do I do next? What button do I click on next? And almost like a YouTube, you know, how to fix something video. Because I think a lot of people are going to struggle with it. Because we only put it on social media, there's a segment of our population that doesn't have it.
It's also in the county newsletter, and it'll be there again before the whole thing is over. Mid Rivers News ran an article last week in both print and online. And we will get it in as many places as we can get it put.
I would highly suggest a step-by-step video to make it really simple. Versus trying to look at something, and then you're looking over here back and forth. A video makes it nice and easy. That's just my two cents.
I'll talk to communications and see what they can come up with.
Takes about 12 minutes to do the whole thing, so.
And the questions are pretty straightforward. What's your name? What's your address? What's your birthday? I mean, yeah.
You made a good point, that if you didn't get the yellow letter, it could be because you may have applied but were not-
Approved.
Approved. And there were some people who were not approved. So that is a reapplication-
That is considered a new application.
Or it would be considered a new application, okay.
And the thing to remember, under current law, those who did not get approved for the program last year, and they were 62 on January 1st of 2024, their lookback year will still be 2024. It's the people who turned 62 during 2024 and are first applying in '25, whose lookback year, their frozen amount will be their '25 liability. So those people who didn't get approved last year didn't lose out on a year of savings. That, that was a big concern we heard from a lot of people. You didn't lose out on a year of savings. The current law, if you were 62 on January 1st of 2024, that is still your frozen liability. There is legislation pending that changes it to the first year you applied. Because let's say we get 10 years down the road, somebody applies, and they could have been back in '24, and now somebody has to go look through the chain of title, make sure they were always at that address. were always at that address. So, that's why there's legislation proposed about changing the base year to the year you first apply. But currently, if you apply in '25, and you were eligible in '24, but you didn't get approved in '24, your lookback will still be '24.
But you couldn't, it could conceivably be that you're not approved again this year? It, what, why is it?
It's conceivable, but that's why, last year, the service center opened after we decided there had to be a correction period. The service center was not open until July. June 30th was the deadline. But there were so many people who did not submit the right ownership deed, that we said, this, we just can't do this. We can't do this to all these people. So, we created the service center. If they come in, we're going to sit down with them, we're going to go through their stuff. More than likely, everything will be exactly correct. Now, we're not going to say, you're definitely approved that day, because it will go through a second review. But the people who are doing the intake, and assisting with those applications, know what needs to be there. So, that's why we're highly encouraging. If you are in doubt as to how to do it, come to the service center.
I don't know if you're planning on doing this, but they, um, started putting somebody at the O'Fallon DMV, and when you walk in, cause.
We're going to have a greeter.
Thank you. Just make sure that you go through.
Our first table is a greeter.
Beautiful. There's nothing like waiting in line for a half hour or longer, and then getting up there and finding out you didn't have the right paperwork. So, if you can catch them at the door, go through, I, I think that would stop a lot of grief. Or at least potentially, stop a lot of grief. Any other questions? Michelle, thanks for coming.
You're most welcome.
We appreciate that. Uh, with that, that'll wrap up our public presentations, and I promise not to do two in a row ever again. Uh, gets us to conditional use permit, bill number 5365.
Bill number five.
Thanks for your patience.
Bill number 5365, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 24-08, for an automobile storage yard to KLB Holdings LLC, property owner, and JNI Hauling LLC applicant.
We did the public hearing on this two weeks ago, um, so I would ask you to call the roll.
Bill number 5365, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 24-08, for an automobile storage yard to KLB Holdings LLC, property owner, and JNI Hauling LLC applicant. Councilwoman Swanson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hollander? Councilwoman York?
Yes.
Councilwoman Baker?
Yes.
Uh, conditional use permit 5365 is approved. Bill number 5365, congratulations. With that, that'll move us on to public comments. Um, reminder, you have three minutes in which to speak. You will, did I do something wrong? You have a strange look on your face. No, we're good? Okay. Uh, I'm used to a woman giving me a look of disapproval. So, 30, 34 years of marriage, I'm used to that. Um, so we will have three minutes on the clock for you to speak. Typically, we do three, four, three against, but being that the majority of this room is county employees, I feel good that we're not going to have to do that. So, first speaker?
First speaker, Joe Mo Castro, 5366.
Hey. Good afternoon, counsel. Uh, good evening. Uh, great to be here with everyone again. Uh, two weeks ago, I came and spoke before the council around this, uh, bill, 5366. Uh, it was, I gained a lot of knowledge that night, just in understanding the rationale. So, thank you to Councilman Baker and, and the team, for kind of just explaining the rationale to the, uh, to the changes that, that were being requested, and what wasn't changing. Uh, now, as we did, there, there were some concerns that my network team raised, uh, and I'd like to come back with our biggest concern, and just recommend an amendment. Uh, and, and basically, that amendment is to change the antenna restriction from, from five feet to eight feet. Uh, and the simple reason being that we don't install antennas that are less than five feet. Uh, so, our antennas are eight feet. Uh, so, therefore, I recommend, uh, you know, an amendment to, uh, the current ordinance, uh, to change, it's in, it's listed in sections 1B and 1C of the, uh, of the ordinance. Uh, and I, I appreciate any consideration to change that from five feet to eight feet, in both those places. And I'll take any questions at the appropriate time.
When we get to the bill, if we have any, we'll call you up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
Arne Dinoff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Dinoff, uh, state and county public advocate. As you can see, I wore my red, because it's a great day. Can't wait for spring training to be over, and then we start the season. To economic development director, Scott, I support you, I think you're doing a great job, but we need transparency, and allowing myself and other residents to comply with chapter 610.015 and 610.020 of the revised state statutes of Missouri, for open inviting meetings. I've asked to go to the meetings of the Economic Development Center and council, and they say it's a private country club, and they're closed to the public. I had a conversation with the Attorney General's office, and they said that they're required to be open, under the sunshine law and Open Meetings Act, as they're a political subdivision. To Sheriff Scott Lewis, the security checkpoint is a joke. The officers down there need to learn common sense, and not having citizens undress half of their clothing, because their belt is on. And I think that we can use some common sense, like they do at our state capitol, with the Missouri State Capitol Police Department. Steve Elman, you made a huge issue of not, um, appointing Gary Griffin of Defiance, a pillar of our county, by not appointing him to a fourth term. Mr. Elman, you stated on the record, and on video, that you will not be appointing anyone for more than three terms, period. And I can pull up that video. Matthew Johannesburgman, City of St. Charles, who served over 10 years, a decade, more than three terms, you have him on for a fourth term, for appointment. Brian Putman, City of St. Charles, who served over 10 years, more than a decade, you have him on the docket tonight, buried in the consent agenda, for a fourth term. Why do you continue to pay Bob Schnarr his pension 80% of $150,000, county salary and monthly, uh, pension payments, and $89 per hour as the intermittent, intermediate, uh, professional to a made-up, uh, palm-greasing, political patronage job? Um, why do we need Mr. Schnarr, when you hired, uh, a full-time director of finance, sliding and punching a woman in the face, telling her, uh, telling Tracy that she wasn't good enough to be the permanent finance director, and bringing in another political appointee? Uh, it's just shameful. And to Rory O'Sullivan, your letters of not having lobbyist documents, and now you want to charge $125.52 an hour to do a search for the report is ridiculous. The county register, Brenda Hinman, once again, I'm making a public information request under 610.023. I'd like the written format of the update from the $250,000 lobbyist, Mike Gibbons and Tom Dempsey.
Thank you, Mr. Demp.
And, uh, I appreciate you complying with the sunshine laws, we would not have to go to court, Mr. O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Dinoff. That wraps up. Next speaker?
Mary Chapman, regarding chemtrails.
Regarding what?
Chemtrails.
Chemtrails. You can just give it to them, and they'll give it to us later. Whenever you're ready.
Okay. Hi, I'm Mary Chapman. I want to thank you for hearing me today. I'm here to ask St. Charles County Council to please take these handout photos. Did you all get them?
They have them right there. They'll give them to us after.
She would like us to see them now.
And, uh, if you could give one to.
Can you pause the timer real quick?
You could give one to Steve, please.
There you go.
Claire, do you want to just hand it to us?
We were at, like, 2:50.
Claire, do you want to hand it to us?
Uh, okay, so I've got two pages. I didn't know that's how it went. All right. I apologize. Uh, these photos are what is known as atmospheric aerosol chemical injections, commonly known as chemtrails, also known as geoengineering. Uh, a few understand, in the civil sector, it is primarily a military science, and has nothing to do with cooling the planet, lowering the carbon emissions, which is a fraud anyway. Warfare includes the technological ability to induce hands, or direct cyclonic events, earthquakes, droughts, flooding, and more. These chemicals include the use of polymerized aerosol agents, liquids, metals, such as aluminum particles, barium particles, strontium, strontium, and/or many others. I would like to call attention to U.S. Code Title 50, Chapter 32, Section 1520A, which makes it illegal to conduct tests which can affect or alter the weather, or the environment, without the specific consent of all Americans. And also, make it illegal to subject the American population to any biological or medical experiments without their consent. At which point, will our, our corporate government servants do something to protect the living men, women, children, livestock, waterways, and air that we breathe? The list goes on. I have a question for the county executor and council, and, uh, from what I understand, it seems like the local parks and recreation overseer, whoever that may be, I'm not sure. Uh, so, are any of you aware this is going on? If so, why, why is nothing being done about it? You're, we are, you are being poisoned as well. And, um... I guess these are questions that should go to the director of the Parks Department, which oversees the airports. Is he here tonight?
He is. You can leave him with the table if you want.
And, that's you? Okay. Thank you. Uh, so, these planes are dumping, uh, their payloads, are flying out of local, or they are flying out of local airports. Smaller airports, not Lambert. Anyway, I appreciate the time, and I would like to know if, uh, any of you have a response to this, to me personally.
We don't do back and forth during public comment.
You don't?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So, you're, you still have 20 seconds, if there's something else you want to add?
No, I think I've made my point. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
That was the final speaker.
All right. That moves us on to oral report from the county executive.
Mr. Chairman, I was planning on spending 10 or 15 minutes in, in talking about, uh, bills in the legislature that we're following. Uh, I know a couple of them, and Mr. Baker's real interested in. I can do that if you want me to, but I can, I can wait to, to the next meeting, if you'd rather, since we're moving pretty slow so far tonight.
It's up to you.
We're here.
Uh, we can do it now? Okay.
I was going to say, I think the next meeting may be a little more packed.
Yeah, the next meeting may be a, a bit busy.
Yeah.
It's all good. You are talking about Jeff City, although they seem to be pretty efficient this year.
Better than, better than last year. Okay, um... Going to go over some bills. Uh, some of them, uh, were already in the works when we first started talking about them, and I'll mention those. Others, uh, we first mentioned to, uh, our delegation, about eight or nine of them showed up, Mr. Baker was there, uh, and we talked to them, and, uh, some of them have, have agreed to sponsor these bills. One, uh, that I think is interesting, I talked to the mayor of, uh, St. Charles, and he agreed with me, that when we originally created the, the city-county library district, uh, gee, probably 80, 90% of the votes were from the county. And that's why the county got the majority of the votes, and, and, or, excuse me, or from the city, and that's why the city got four, got all the mayor's votes. And, uh, Mr. Borgmeyer's willing to go ahead and give that up, and if they pass this bill, uh, they will simply, uh, the, the four largest cities will get to name, uh, a member of that board. We still will have the majority, but the, the four, uh, city members will be appointed, one by each city, and that will take place over a, a number of years, as they're, as they need to be replaced. East West Gateway, Mr. Chairman, you know all about this. Uh, we have 415,000 people. City of St. Louis has less than 300,000, yet City of St. Louis has three votes at East West Gateway, and we have two. And, uh, was formed in 1965. At that time, uh, the previous census in 1960, the city still had more, more people than the county. By 1970, that, that changed considerably. But, uh, halfway through the decade, they went ahead and gave the city and county each three votes. We got one. Jeff County got one, Franklin County got one. Later on, when the county got to be a million people, they gave them a fourth vote. They're, they're underrepresented as well. But we definitely are, and, um, there's actually a statute that limits the amount of money the state can send to East West Gateway. And I think it's, uh, I think it was 50,000 for each, each jurisdiction, or something like that. But what I'd like, what I'd like to see done, would be to have that amended, and say that East West Gateway can't get the money from the state, unless they actually re-district and make it one man, one vote. Make it based on population. If they don't do that, or until they do that, the dues that we pay, which now is based upon our population, which means we pay a lot more than the City of St. Louis, while we have fewer votes, until they do that, it would be based on the number of votes, instead of the population. So, if, if, if they pass this, it's great, but I want to at least get some hearings on it, get some publicity, because I don't think people realize how we're, uh, getting short-changed at East West Gateway. Human Rights Act, you, I don't know if anybody saw it in the paper this morning, it was a, it was a headline. Uh, our Senator, um, um...
Schnelting.
Yeah, Schnelting, Senator Schnelting. Uh, actually, I, I, I talked to him about this bill, and he already had it, he already had it drafted, and, and was ready to file it. So, uh, good for him. Uh, the story in the paper totally missed the point, I think. The point of this, of course, this is the, this is where the, uh, the school district in Blue Springs was challenged by a transsexual student's parents, because the student was not allowed to go into the locker room that he or she wanted to go into. I don't forget what it is. All right? They, uh, they went ahead and filed a lawsuit, took it to the circuit court in Jackson County, the judge dismissed it. It was brought under the Missouri Human Rights Act. And he dismissed it, they went to the Supreme Court of Missouri, and the Supreme Court re, uh, overturned it, on a 4-2 vote. Uh, they said, yeah, that sort of thing is covered by the Missouri Human Rights Act. And the, and the part of the act that covers it, is, is the part that says you can't discriminate on the basis of sex. Those of you who are as old as I am, may remember back in the early 80s, when we were talking about the Equal Rights Amendment? And one of the arguments that people on the, on the right made, was that if you pass the Human Rights Amendment, that, uh, you know, they'll have to have unisex bathrooms. And of course, the people on the left said, oh, that's crazy, no judge would ever interpret that language that way. Well, what we've got now is the reverse, just the opposite. We got language that says, can't discriminate on the basis of sex. The last time that bill was approved, was in 1994. And I was in the Senate, and I can guarantee you, 34 people in the Senate, 164 people in the House, there wasn't a single person, when they voted for that, thought they were voting for what the Supreme Court says that stands for, which, which is that we can't tell, uh, we can't te, tell people which restaurant, restroom, or locker room to go into. So, um, the, that, that's, that's, that's the part that everybody's most concerned about. I will tell you that we have another interest in this bill, that financially is very important to us. The, the people who won this lawsuit are not only going to, oh, they're actually, it's in, it's in the Supreme Court now, but they, they went to trial, and they got, Rory, do you remember, was it a couple million dollars?
I can't remember.
Yeah, two or three million dollars. But in addition, this Missouri Human Rights Act, they passed an amendment a few years ago, the attorneys, they get attorney's fees. You know, there's two types of ways, you got the British, uh, the British system, where, you know, the, whoever wins gets their attorney's fees. And you got the American system, where everybody pays their own. Well, this is un-American, I think. They got the British system, except only in one direction. And that is, if you, if you sue us under Missouri, Missouri Human Rights Act, and you win $1, you can get your attorney's fees. And Rory can talk about this better than I am. We got a lot of, uh, situations that come up already, in which we think if we went to trial, we'd have a real good chance to win, but the insurance companies are saying, no, you've got to settle, because if they get even $1, then we got to pay their attorney's fees. So, we're going to try to get somebody to offer an amendment to that bill, that would take care of that, which would make a big, uh, difference.
Just for clarification, when you talk about the Supreme Court, are you talking about the U.S. Supreme Court?
No, no, Missouri Supreme Court.
Or the Missouri Supreme Court?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Missouri Supreme Court.
I thought so.
There, there are other ways, you could take, bring a federal lawsuit under federal law.
Right, right.
But, uh, under Missouri law, under the MHRA, if you bring it and win, you can get attorney's fees. So, we're seeing more and more of those cases come through the state courts, instead of the federal.
Okay, thank you.
Stormwater, Mr. Baker, you know, asked us to.
Say it back to that.
Yeah.
Doesn't Adam have a, a bill he's proposing?
Yeah, that's what I was saying. Their story in the Post-Dispatch, I know you don't read it.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, no.
But I read it under the theory of no diememi. But there's a story this morning, it's on Above the Fold, about, about his bill.
Doing its generous, with male, female period?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, anyway, I actually went up and testified in favor of his bill a couple of weeks ago, and he got it out of committee last week. He's pretty excited. It'll be interesting. Under stormwater, neighborhood improvement districts, talked about this, this is one way for people who have a stormwater problem in their neighborhood, they can, they can use a NID. Now, we've used NIDs in the past to do sewers, okay? So, you know, we have a bunch of people on septic tanks, and they want to do a sewer district, we will lend them the money, and then they will pay us back over ten, twenty, thirty years, whatever. But we need to change the statute so you can do the same thing with a, with a stormwater project that we do now with sewers. But we can't do that unless we change the language in the statute, and, yeah, Senator Schnelting agreed to file that. The, the other thing we talked about, Mr. Baker, is very interested in maybe getting some of this Great Rivers Greenway sales tax money, which in the original bill that I voted for back in two thousand, you could do this, but it was amended later on, and now our attorneys believe that when they amended the bill, they, they eliminate the possibility of using that money for stormwater. We just want to kind of return it back to what its original intent was. Representative Wellencamp's agreed to file the bill, and hopefully, we can see that move. Lambert Airport, this is a, they're gonna spend over two billion dollars at the airport in the next decade or so to build a new terminal. Right now, everything's controlled by the City of St. Louis. City owns the, the ground the airport was built on, but that airport has been built entirely with user fees and federal grants. And there's even a statute that was passed back in the eighties that said any money that's made in the airport stays in the airport, but Senator Danforth put a grandfather clause for St. Louis in there. So, now, ever since then, the City of St. Louis is allowed to take five percent of the, of the profits, which amounts to six or seven million dollars a year. They're able to take that money out of the airport, take it down to the City of St. Louis, and God knows what they do with it down there. But I think the money ought to stay in the airport. If it's made in the airport, it ought to stay there, and, and this bill would go ahead and require that. The other thing is, there's actually a, a commission that's authorized, the Metropolitan Airport Authority, it's still in the statute, it was put in back in the seventies when they were debating what to do about Lambert, whether they should go to Illinois and whatnot, it's still there. And the governor, the only thing is, it can't be funded. I'd like to see it funded again, even if it's not funded, I'd love to see the governor go ahead and appoint some people, just so there's somebody from the entire region around that project that can report back about how the money's being spent. Two billion dollars, that's, that's a lot of money. On taxes, we all know about the, the windfall that everybody else got, we declined to take it. I think they need to change the, although I don't think it's gonna happen very often again where your value of your used car goes up, in case it does, they need to change that. And there's a bill, Senator Fitzwater has agreed to do it. Education, as you know, the state constitution doesn't allow our charter to go into education issues. Our only involvement with education is really truancy and school safety, have school resource officers. The reason I put this in there is because, y'all remember taking your constitution, Missouri Constitution test? There's been a statute for, I don't know, fifty years, that you got to pass a Missouri Constitution and a US Constitution test before you can graduate. During the COVID, of course, we were the only place where people could come and complain. The legislature had adjourned, the school, the, the school boards were having closed meetings, the cities were having closed meetings. We were the only place where you could come in and sit down and come up here and complain. And that's fine, you know, we, we, we listen to a lot. But what was really frustrating for me is there was a lot of people didn't realize that they were talking to the wrong folks. Okay? And I just think, you know, I think if the schools did a better job of explaining, here's the federal government, this is the things they do. Then we got the state government, here's the things they do. Then we got the county government, here's what they do. And then we got cities and school districts and everything down here. And if, you know, depending on what you need, that, that will determine where you go. I think they ought to have a standardized test going forward. Originally, I thought, well, that's really not the county's problem. But given our experience, I, I think, I think we all agree, it was tough sitting here listening to people, and what they were saying, we may have agreed with, but there wasn't anything we could do about it. Regional Sports Authority, half of the, half of the cost of Edwards-Jones Dome was paid for by these taxpayers of the state of Missouri. Okay? I voted against it back in nineteen eighty-nine, but it passed anyway. And, and the worst part about it wasn't just that we were paying for it, but the, the people in control then, the Democrats, basically set up an authority, a regional sports authority. And even though the people of the state paid for half of it, and people staying in hotels and motels paid the other half, they gave the City of St. Louis and St. Louis County the majority of the boards, of the board members on this RSA. And, and the state taxpayers got the minority of the members. Okay? And then the majority went ahead and hired the convention and sports authority to run the thing, and guess what? Convention and sports authority is, is appointed entirely by the city and county, and nobody cared much about this until all of a sudden the Rams money came around. So, you know, I, I think that the taxpayers' investment should have been protected first, and whatever they did, they should make sure that that dome doesn't become a white elephant. And then whatever's left, they can let the city and county fight over. But instead, the vast majority of the money went to the, the city and county, and a lot more to the city than to the county. So, I'd like, I'd like to see that changed. Open records, this is just a question of what we can and can't charge for, and I'm gonna let, if you have questions about that, I'm gonna let you ask Rory, because he's, he's more familiar than I am. Ethics complaint against lawyers, we had a complaint several years ago, took years to get it resolved, which is fine. But if it takes them that long to resolve a complaint by the third largest, the third largest jurisdiction in the state of Missouri, what about when the individuals, the individual taxpayer or the individual resident files a complaint? I mean, how long, how long they gonna, how they gonna, how long they gonna take? So, this just puts some things in the statute about keeping people informed, making a decision by a certain date, and not letting it just linger there. Wrongful convictions, I don't know. Joanne or Rory, you wanna, you wanna handle this?
Sure.
Yeah. Go ahead, yeah. Well, you can just do it from there.
Okay. So, right now, there's only one statute that deals with providing compensation for those who have been exonerated, and that is related to DNA exonerations. For all others, the statute is silent, and so we're proposing of asking the delegation to consider adding in all those, making it basically applicable to, to all different types of exoneration. So, we're talking about, I think, right now, it's an X amount of dollars per, per day or per year that the person is wrongfully in custody. And the reason for that is just to give some kind of certainty, so that you can, you know, as the government plan for things like that, I think.
Yeah, we're talking about people who, who were imprisoned and not later exonerated.
Correct, and it's sometimes not even just exonerated, but sometimes through, you know, a technicality, they will have their sentences, you know...
And it puts a limit on how much, how much we would have to pay.
There's a, there would be a statutory cap, so that's, again, there'd be some sort of certainty for the governmental entities.
Okay, thank you. Real quickly here, vehicle inspections, y'all had your vehicle inspected for decades now. The, a couple of years ago, our legislators passed a bill to take us out of it. The governor vetoed it because EPA, and even after he vetoed it, they wouldn't, EPA wouldn't let us pass our tip, which delayed the curve funding, and we had to wait another six months, even though the East West Gateway people went back and redid the calculations and found out that the result was the same, whether we were in or out. But we had a guy from the EPA come in and say, no, can't let you do it. Well, I don't think the president administration's EPA will do that. So, I, I'd like to see him pass it again, and I'm trying to think, oh, Thiessen?
Mark Matheson.
Yeah, Mark, Mark, Matheson, Matheson, yeah. He, he has this bill, and I think we're gonna, you know, help him any way we can to pass it. The, the reason, you know, we're back, the Biden administration declared us non-attainment again, and the way they're able to do that is we met the standards. And as soon as you meet the standards, you know what they do? They raise the standards. All right? So, now we're on attainment, they keep, it's a no win, it's, it's moving the goalpost. It's like, you know, kicking a field goal, and, and it's good, and then the next time you kick it, they're gonna move the goalpost five, five yards further back, and now, and now you fail. So, it all became a problem when, oh gee, two, two, who was president for Trump? Obama. Obama, Obama people went ahead and the EPA said that CO2 was a pollutant. Okay? Well, CO2, some of it comes out of tailpipes, but most of it, the problem, comes from coal-powered plants. All right? We have one testing station in St. Charles County, and because we're non-attainment, we have to do all this stuff with our cars. Wouldn't you think they would put the testing station along Interstate seventy or Interstate sixty-four? No. They put it down in Portage, near the coal plant. Okay? So, so, we are basically having to get our cars inspected because we have now become part of the war against coal. All right? Now, you can have your own opinion about the war against coal, but that's, that's one thing. This war against the drivers, you know, trying to make us go to all this inconvenience to make that much of a little difference is, is, I think, out of place. So, I think, playing defense, there's a lot of things we, we just play defense on every year, or against forfeiture fund changes, automated traffic enforcement, or for modifications of public records, changes in the annexation requirements, the cities are constantly trying to change some of those rules, impacts on transportation funding, and then the property tax relief law, we talked about that quite a bit already. That's all I have. Hopefully, I can report back after the session that, that some, some of these things at least passed. Any questions I'd be glad to...
Let's see, on the annexations, Richard Russell's supposed to be filing a bill to make it a little, so, St. Charles County, there's only four counties in the state of Missouri that have lax annexation laws, and we're one of them.
They have what?
Lax annexation laws. There's four, four counties, we're one of them. And they were trying to take it back out to take out, what is it, seventy-one or whatever it is, and House Bill seventy-one, where they can't just have public, Joanne and I, we talked about this, where they don't just have, they can decide they're gonna do an annexation and just go to a city council meeting and pass it with no insight or no, no permission from the county. And so, some of these annexation laws on those four counties should be changed, which is equal for all counties. Because what's gonna happen, if we continue to grow with these cities, grow, 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 it's gonna eliminate our services, it's gonna eliminate our department, our police department, it's gonna eliminate our highway department, it's gonna make us smaller and smaller because municipalities are taking all the services over. So, right or wrong, the annexation process in our county is completely unfair to St. Charles County people.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, and the, the, the most unfair part is that they can do voluntary annexations, and if there's nobody living there to vote against it, it's strictly up to the city.
Exactly right.
And that's why on the economic development, when that guy came in here, Mike, you were there, you know, he was talking about, you know, we don't have as much commercial in the unincorporated county. And I had to explain, that's because every time somebody builds something in unincorporated area that's adjacent to a city, so all they gotta do is file an annexation, there's nobody in the, there's nobody that lives at the Dearburg store who can vote no. So, it just, it comes in automatically. So, we lose, well, we don't lose, but the people end up having to pay not only county but city taxes, and there's nothing really they can do to stop it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That moves us up to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove facilities, the roofing on the police department.
Facilities.
It's already...
It's what?
That was removed before.
It's been, it's on the agenda, it's on the bottom, miscellaneous. Is that what you mean, Claire?
It was removed in the last meeting, so it's already listed under items removed, so we can take it out after you put the consent in.
Is that the only item that you want removed?
That's the only one I got, yeah.
So, since that's already under items removed from the consent agenda that we did last time, ineffective on, it got tabled, if you will, on the last part. So, if you don't have any other items, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion approved, consent agenda.
Motion, motion approved and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, could I have a motion to consider the facilities, the item that we tabled last time? Joe?
I'll bring it up for conversation, yes.
So, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Negative.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Mr. Brazel.
I apologize for the delay on this whole process. I was in Mexico, and then we had the snow and everything, and then I, I did talk to Christine finally today, and I'm opposed to this process, and I'll just give you some reasons why, and maybe they have a different philosophy than me, but, so, in, in the roofing business, you have, this is about, this is about, I guess, four thou, forty thousand square feet, four hundred square, so it's about a nine hundred thousand dollar roof. And in, in the insurance world, when there's hail damage, which there's hail damage on this roof, the coping caps are dented, it's a T, it's, it's not a TPO, it's an SBS, it's a modified, multi-play, built-up roof. And so, when I was talking to her about it, they, I talked to the contractor who's doing the job, who's, he's a great contractor, there's no problems there. I, I was just trying to get the scope of work, what they're doing, and from what I understand, they're gonna cut out about just four square wet insulation and then cover it up with a single ply TPO roof. So, that means that we're ending up with two roofs, and, and when I do roofing, I've been doing it thirty years, I go head to head with the insurance companies, and I get the, the customer what they deserve and what they've earned by paying insurance. Now, I'm not sure, I, from what I understand with Joanne, it's not an insurance dispute, this was an internal decision by facilities. And I'm just, I just told Christine, I'm not gonna support it, I don't believe in it because you're covering up another roof with a, a, a single ply, or a modified SBS roof is a more durable roof, it's a middle of the road. You got single ply TPOs, you got SBS modified, then you got built-up roofs. So, you're talking about eighteen years, in the industry standards, twenty-four to twenty-six years, and you're talking about thirty-four years on a built-up roof. They're going with the lowest type grade roof, a TPO covering it up. And so, if they were to tear it up, this won't even be to the, to the energy codes, it doesn't, you got an R thirty, two layers of two-point-six insulation, which is required with the new energy codes, they won't even have, it won't be even eating the energy standards of the codes of what is required on commercial buildings. And when it's an institutional building such as this, you want to go for lifecycle costs, and you want to go for longevity and long, and long-term roofs. So, if the insurance company's willing to pay nine hundred thousand dollars on a replace with like-kind, and pay for all the insurance upgrades, which they should, you got to pay for code compliance, then we would get a much better system. Covering it up with a single ply roof, the, I don't mean to be nerdy, because I know I'm a roof nerd, but when you, when you put down a roof system, the, the existing roof system has poly-isow insulation, and it's put it with fasteners. And then what they do is they fully adhere a substrate on top of that, and then they put the membrane on it. When you put the fully adhered membrane or the Denzec or fiberboard on top of the fasteners, it stops thermal bridging. You don't have transfer of heat from the building to the outside. So, when you get on a roof and you'll see all the fasteners, you'll see all the snow melted, you won't see that on the old system. But what they're gonna do is they're gonna cover the roof up, not, not increase the insulation, put a divorce board down, which is a Denzec, which is point-five insulation, and then, and then glue a TPO, which is a lower grade roof than the SBS roof, which is sixty mil single ply, and they're gonna glue it right to the top, and then you have, you got, you have heat transfer, you'll, you'll have the heat transfer through the fasteners, and then you have multiple fasteners through the roof deck, and then you lose about ten, about actually fifteen to twenty percent of your insulation, which is only two, it's only twenty-two percent R factor anyway. And so, this is really a bad system, and I tried to explain it. I suggested that we meet with the, the consulting or, and, uh, insurance company, whatever, and let's just run through the numbers on, I suggested that today, let's run through the numbers. We just got to have a lifecycle cost on this, because what you're doing here is you're putting on a really cheap system on an institutional building, and you're basically kicking the can down the road. You're just making, making it an obligation for the next county executive or the next council members to deal with this in fifteen years. It won't last twenty years like the warranty says. The warranty is here. The warranty is here, it excludes all substrates, which that means that when they lay it on top of the old roof, it excludes everything on, that it's laying on top of. And often these insulations buckle and stuff, because they're old, and they get old, they start buckling and crumbling. So, you're, you're putting the, the new substrate on the old substrate, which by the warranty, it excludes all substrates that it's putting on. So, I'm just not in agreement with it. And so, I won't support it, you guys can decide what you wanna do. And I, I understand Christine said that, well, we're gonna save three or 400,000, whatever the number is. But I go, yeah, but you got a one-time chance by the insurance company to pay for the full roof minus depreciation and minus whatever other percentages are in there. So, we might have to come up with $300,000, but come up for $300,000 for a million dollar roof, it sounds like a winner to me, and that's just my position. So, I can't support it as is. I would be willing to sit, sit down with facilities and, and go through the numbers with them and everything if we had some time. And then, if they wanna come back to the council and say, well, here's, here's the numbers, council, you got this choice with this lifecycle, or you got this choice with this lifecycle, and make it a, a more of a business model than an executive decision without us involved, that's what I think would be the right thing to do. But again, that's my position on this. And I know that the, the roof's leaking and it needs to be fixed, but by going with the cheapest system you can actually purchase is not the solution. And from what I understand, it's leaking consistently. So, did we rescan the roof to find the wet installation? Because if I told you, can't cover wet insulation. Those are my points.
Any other questions or thoughts?
Sounds like you know something about this.
And, and Mr. Elman was worried about boring us by talking about legislation.
Well, I know I'm a roof nerd, I'm sorry.
Christine, do you wanna explain to us?
So...
And feel free to go into all that same jargon that I have no idea what he just talked about.
Unfortunately, I'm not going to do that.
God love you.
I'm not a roof nerd. So, we hire a consultant. So, I absolutely know that, that Mr. Brazel knows a whole lot more about the roofing, roofing systems and all of that than, than I do. We hire a roofing consultant. The roofing consultant has looked at this roof a number of times over the years. And yes, we know it's leaking. We, we have had areas where it's been leaking, he's identified those areas. So, the, the piece that I wanna stress is that what, what we're trying to do is make a fiscally responsible decision. If today you, you decide that doing the approach that, that we're asking approval for is not the approach that you wanna take, then we will go, we'll rebid us and we'll do it a different way. But I do think it bears question or bears conversation as to why? Why are we doing it this way? So, we knew, come 2025, I was asking for money to replace that roof. We get hit with a, a hailstorm. We have an opportunity. We were originally planning on doing an overlay. Yes, we could identify the wet areas, the damaged areas where we've been having problems. We are also going to do a scan of the, the roof to make sure. Do we really capture all of the bad areas? So, we were gonna make sure that we did our due diligence before we started doing the, the project, the tear-off and everything else. So, we do have it built into the bid that we would know how much more, if there's a change, it's controlled, that, that change of, the, the change order that we may end up having, if we have it. So, we knew that we were gonna be doing some overlay. And to our consultant, this is a common approach. So, while it may not be common for Mr. Brazel to take this approach, it has been taken with the county before, and we would continue to do this regardless of the size of the building. We take into account the, the current damage or current state of the roof, then we go ahead and we, we assess that and we make that determination with the assistance of the consultant. So, we're trying to be fiscally responsible. We know that the insurance company will cover about $632,000 of this, and we know that this roof would be 930 some thousand, could be a little more, could be a little bit less. But if we do a complete and full tear-off, we do know that the county would be responsible for about $300,000 worth of, of repairs. So, we're looking at this, is that in a brand-new roofing system, full tear-off, new bu, new roof, we get a 20-year warranty. This is a partial, we're still getting a 20-year warranty. Now, I do know that, that, that warranty does not cover the original material that's underneath. But we are covering it up with a, we're attaching, as he said, mechanically attaching that Denz board, that actually the documentation that we have gives us an R value of 2.5, which gets our, our value very close within one of what a current code compliance would be. So, we're still getting a 20-year warranty. Could that substrate fail? Sure. Could a 20-year roof on an original building, which is what we have today, could it fail and it not get covered under warranty? Sure. It could too, because we always have to work with the manufacturer and the installer to be able to uphold them into the warranty terms. So, I do know that we've had roofing areas, that we've had challenges holding these companies accountable because they don't want to actually uphold their warranties. I've also found some success in holding them accountable. But we're looking into the future, into a crystal ball, and determining what are we, what are we at risk for. So, right now, I'm looking at this in, in a fiscal manner, in that this could cost us $300,000 out of pocket. Yes, we know that the insurance company is covering the majority of it, but I have an opportunity where the insurance company is covering all of it versus us being out of pocket 300. What is the likelihood, if I'm a statistician, what is the likelihood I'm spending $300,000 in the next 20 years? I think that's a risk that's worth taking, because I don't believe it's gonna be $300,000 or above $300,000 in the next 20 years. Most repairs that we get, average, give or take, $1,500. That's a whole lot of times we gotta repair a roof. So, I understand that this is maybe not the approach that we would normally take or we would otherwise take, but I was planning on doing an overlay regardless. That was the recommendation that was given to us, and I didn't see that a, a hail damage would change that direction. We are getting a 20-year warranty, we are getting the R factor close to what it would be if we did a full, complete tear-off. And we're taking that $300,000 and saying, we did not fund for this, we did not budget for this, we still can get this done and not have to incur that cost. But as I said, you can either vote for it, because this is the approach that we're trying to take to be fiscally responsible, or you can vote that we do need to do a complete tear-off because that is, is what you were voting to state, that that is the appropriate measures that we should take. Regardless, that's the action that we will take, we will pursue, or we will go back and rebid this project.
Questions for Christine? Dave?
Well, I, you still got all the water damage that's done underneath the, the roof, si, roofing system to the insulation.
Yeah, we're removing the insulation, the damaged areas.
So, I, I guess I'm with, I'm with Joe that we should do a complete tear-off and replace the roof. Are you, you are, and plus, we'll get the additional R value that codes require nowadays, so we'll have a lot more energy-efficient building.
Any other thoughts? So, if I'm understanding correctly, this 509, 466, the insurance company's paying 100%.
Correct.
So, we're, we're paying zero.
Correct.
And how quickly can we fix the roof if we do this? How quickly will it be repaired?
Approximately two months.
Two months? If, if we go the other direction, how long will it take before we would end up fixing the roof at the police station?
Probably six months or more. Because the school districts, we, we're understanding from several of the roofing companies, and is actually, in a lot of different areas, the contractors are gearing up because the school districts have apparently a lot of projects that they're doing this summer. So, we are going to get virtually no assistance. We are gonna see some challenges in getting anything done over the, the summer months. So, we are actually anticipating that if, if we go out to, to bid for this, to do a complete and replacement, that we will miss this window of opportunity, and we will be in the, the fall, right before the winter season hits.
So, if we, um...
And we will also miss kind of a, there's pricing increases that are likely gonna happen as well.
Okay.
Well, I would disagree with that, because if you're, you're in March, right, you're not even in March yet right now, and you put the bid package, you already got the bid package, the contractor's already been out there, they know the roof. So, you would post it, bid it, and then number, they already been on the roof. So, you'd invite all the same guys, and they gotta post it, some other people might show up, and they could turn the bids in two weeks. The council then had the conversation, where, where, what's going on? And they would be able to get it done by the, the, you're talking about the May 30th. I know what you're talking about, school, they get every work, but they would be able to cram that in. It's not that, it's a 40...
If they have the manpower with the current project load that they've got. So, that is, that's...
Christine, I work with every contractor in St. Louis, I have for 30 years, I know them all, and we're still bidding a ton of stuff.
Okay.
So, you can say that, but I wanna agree with that.
Okay.
So, it's just, to me, it's better to just get the job done right than to do it like this. And so, I've been doing this a long time, and I do not retrofit roofs. We don't even, it's, it's against NRCA, National Roofing Contract Association. And then plus, when you have the fasteners going through the roof like that with a thermal bridge, and you're losing 10 to 15% of the R factor. So, you, not only are you not even up to the energy code on your roof, then you're going, putting fasteners through it, and you're losing that percentage of insulation, and that's a fact. I could give you the documentation on that. The other thing is, is here we're a county government that provides building permits and all this other stuff, and we require people to follow codes.
We are following code on this.
You're following code because you're not pulling the material off. If you're pulling, if you expose the deck, you'd have to have an R30.
That is true.
Okay.
Well, we, as I understand, it's R, R25.
It's R30, it's two layers of 2.6.
Okay.
But anyway, I mean, that's my position, you guys do what you want. It's just, it's not a practice, these are institutional biz, buildings, they're long-term buildings, you don't put cheap systems on them. And, um, that's just my perspective, you know? I've been doing it a long time, and I don't ever do this to a college or school or anything.
Is that a motion? Are you doing a motion?
Well, I have a motion to, um, have her rebid it, we can table this and hold it in place, and then let her rebid it, and, or I don't even know if we need to hold this, I don't know, how you...
I just wanna make sure, are we done with discussion? Does anybody else have any, Mr. Swanson?
Yes, so, if we would go with the full roof replacement, would that also cover alternate 1, 2, and 3 that's listed within the bid prac, package?
Yes.
So, if we're looking at our numbers there, we have alternate 1 is at 36,000, alternate 2 is at 40,000, alternate 2, garage at another 20, alternate 3 is at almost 55,000, 56,000. So, right there, we're over $150,000. Now, I'm starting to look at the math on it, if we can do the full roof and everything else at 300 and get all the alternates included in it...
The alternate is including that amount, that 500...
The 509, it's already included in that.
So, that is, so, okay, because we've had a lot of change orders come back to us, so you're saying the 509 includes all the alternates?
Yes. We included, we added the alternates into the bid process just in case that there were some areas that we needed to dial back to manage our costs. They were not change orders, they were anticipated, let's make sure we understand what the cost is. If we have to peel something back, an alternative is a way for us to be able to modify the, the total. It was under budget, so all of them were...
And with the areas that are listed in the base bid, that covers all the other leaking areas within the PD?
Yes. It's the original roof at PD, and it's, there's a, a connection between when we extended the front entrance in 2016, 2017, that, that connection was not great. So, we're addressing that piece of it. We're addressing the hail damage to the metal roof that was put in in 2017, the roof portion of the entrance, and then also the, the half of the, the garage in the back that's original. It includes all of that.
Point of order, should, should we just vote this down and then, then come back with the proposal?
You're assuming we're gonna vote it down? I mean, I'm just thinking, in the, in the Doge world that we live in right now, where everybody's talking about cutting and being more efficient and more dollars, we can fix a roof in two months and save the county $300,000. Or, we can go the longer direction, spend more than $300,000, get a roof fixed maybe in six months, and it's still, I'm assuming it's still gonna be leaking over those six months. So, I'm assuming more things are gonna get damaged over that timeframe. So, I'm more torn from the fact of what's more economically responsible for the taxpayers' dollars and saving them $300,000. And what happens if we get another hailstorm in the next five years? Would they come in and pay and replace the whole roof?
Yes. It would still be covered under insurance.
We tend to get a lot of hailstorms around here, based on all the roofing that keeps going on in neighborhoods around me, so...
To add on to it, something that Councilman Brazel said that, you said that would void the warranty on it?
The substrate's not included, so all it is is the membrane, it's just a single ply membrane, it's the only thing included because they put it on the old substrate. So, if you did a new system with upgraded insulation, it would be a complete, full systems warranty. This way, if the substrate follows, if, if it follows with insulation, poly-isow has a tendency to start buckling. So, if it starts buckling, it's not gonna be covered, because it's a substrate, because it's part of a different system, it's not part of this manuf, this is Firestone. It's evolving, they're new, they bought the company. But Firestone will not cover the warranty, it'll only be membrane only. So, it's not a full systems warranty, it's just a skin.
That's true, I mean, nobody's going to warranty the substrate that is existing, that was a previous manufacturer, previous existing...
Correct, so if it was, if it was a new system, it would be a full systems warranty. So, the warranty is pretty useless, to be quite frank about it. I mean, it just is, because it's just gonna cover the membrane. And these membranes only go about 18 years, about industry anyway, and then, and they get pro-rated, by the end of time, it's fraying and it's splitting, and, and they're not good at hail and all this other stuff. So, you know, it's just not a good system, not for a police department, not for our buildings in this county. We got nice buildings.
We did have several TPO roofs that, with this Denz board underneath, that during this hailstorm, they fared quite well. It's the substrate that matters, as I've been, been schooled, as I've been told, this, that's the reason that TPO does survive through the, the hailstorms well, is because of the substrate.
All right. Any further discussion or questions?
You said that, um, if something goes wrong with it, or if we get another hailstorm, it would be covered under insurance? I know some insurance companies aren't covering multiple, you know, roofs.
Sure, I mean, I'm...
It's kind of like, you, you had one new roof, we're not gonna pay for another one, so...
It could be a certain time period and so forth. So, it is up to our risk management to fully define whether it would or would not be covered. But we are still replacing the roof in the context of repairing the damage. We're not leaving the damage in place. So, it's, it is still being covered under the, the new roof that we would be putting onto it. We had a conversation with Chubb, and we talked about this, and they were in, in agreement with the approach that we were taking. So, based on that, I have to assume that if we have another catastrophic loss, insurance would still cover it.
Okay, that's your assumption on that?
It is an assumption because of the conversation we had with Chubb.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. With that, I've asked what we, um, all those in favor of approving the roof as proposed by Facility, say aye? Aye? All those opposed, say no?
No.
No.
Motion fails. That brings us to bills for final passage. Bill number 5366.
Bill number 5366, in ordinance amending sections 405.505, 405.90, 405.95, 405.100, 405.105, 405.125, 405.130, 405.135, 405.155, and 405.170, O C, O S C C M O, United Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, Missouri, zoning regulations in order to regulate and approve telecommunication facilities through conditional use permits exclusively.
Any questions or comments about this bill?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, provide the one amendment that, uh, takes it from, I think the antennas, five feet to eight feet? If we can make that change, of understanding that we can do that...
Section 1B and 1C.
Yeah, there's, there's specific wording here in motion, you know?
Uh, why don't I... So, the proposed wording would be motion to amend section 1 of Bill 5366 by changing five feet to eight feet in subsection 405.505.B and subsection 405.505.C.3.
So moved.
One clarification on that, please? Five feet in length, not five feet in width? Because it doesn't say anything about width, I think just be a little bit more specific.
Well, there is a motion on the table, you can't amend the motion that has been being seconded. If you have some...
I think the panels are the panels, so, I mean, it's...
If there's no second, second, then it dies, right?
Yeah, because they could be wings, couldn't it? Couldn't they put wings up there if he's, yeah?
So, do you wanna ask the guy from the industry how the antennas are done? Come on back, JoMo.
Our antennas typically stick straight up.
Well, you just said a word that scares me.
Typically, yeah. I mean, look, they're...
So, worry, I'm just trying to go from a lawyer's perspective of if dimensional versus...
I'm just talking about Roberts Rules of Order, if there's a motion...
Okay.
So, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll withdraw my motion.
So the motion's been withdrawn. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Well, the motion you read...
So the motion to be amended would be the motion to amend section 1 of bill number 5366 by changing five feet horizontal...
Sure.
...to eight feet horizontal.
Vertical.
Sorry. Five feet, motion would be five feet vertical to eight feet vertical in subsection 405.505.B and subsection 405.505.C.3.
So moved.
Yeah. You need to accept the amendment to the, to the motion and then vote on the...
I withdrew it.
Oh, you got, you got, it's just a brand new one?
Yes, sir. He withdrew his motion without the second. We started over. Thanks for playing. So I have, I have a new motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Well, that was fun. All right. Any more discussion on this particular bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Amended bill number 5366. An ordinance amending sections 405.505, 405, 405.090, 405.095, 405.100, 405.105, 405.125, 405.130, 405.135, 405.155, and 405.170. OSCCMO. Unified Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, Missouri, zoning regulations in order to regulate and approve telecommunication facilities through conditional use permits exclusively.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander. Councilwoman York.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Swanson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bill number, amended bill 5366 is approved. That wraps up bills for final passage. Bills for introduction, starting with 5367.
Bill number 5367, requested by Ryan Graham, sponsored by Mike Ehlum and Dave Hammond. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a temporary construction easement with the cities of O'Fallon, St. Peters, Cotterville, and the Metropolitan Park and Recreation District for the construction of the Darden Creek Blue Way Trail Project.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none, move on to bill number 5368.
Bill number 5368, requested by Sarah Evers, sponsored by Mike Ehlum. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a program services contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for fetal and infant mortality review.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none, that wraps up bills for introduction. I understand on the table bill, we are still holding on HR to do their review and bring us back an amended bill on or about the 10th.
Yes.
With that, that would take us to announcements and miscellaneous.
I do. Tim?
Yeah, I just got a general question. I've been following St. Louis County, and their pet adoption center, they waived all pet adoption rules, I believe, for a weekend. Do we ever do anything like that?
We do. We do reduce fees at times and, oh, sorry. We do reduce fees at times and I don't know that we've ever entirely waived them, but like, you know, for senior dogs, we'll do.
I would like that to be tried. I mean, it seemed like St. Louis County cleared out a lot of their pets, and is this something that, to think outside the box, which they've done? And I would just, I think it'd be a great motion if we clean that out.
Well, we do things like a $10 weekend for elderly dogs or those types of things. I mean, we can look at...
Is it that much of a moneymaker where we couldn't do it free?
No, it's not having to do with money, but there's a lot of people who believe that if you're not willing to make some investment in having an animal...
Fair enough.
You get kind of reckless adoption.
Fair enough. I appreciate that response. Thank you.
Any other announcements? I did want to bring up, Kevin Colleen put out a press release, nice job by the way. Congratulations, the St. Charles County is awarded the Transportation Achievement of the Year by a professional group for its use of technology that coordinates green lights at intersections for emergency vehicles. So the Gateway Section of the Institute of Transportation Engineers, G-Site, honored our folks, and specifically Amanda Brower got called out. I didn't know if you guys wanted to say anything about that, but I wanted to give a big kudos. She was named as the Professional of the Year by G-Site. So we know she loves traffic, and thank God she does, because she figures out ways to move our cars through our county very, very efficiently. And we've talked about the Gateway Green Light Program for a while, and this is yet another award that we've won because of that program. John, I didn't know if you wanted to speak on that.
Yeah, it was, it was a nice fair on Friday, and St. Charles County came home, big winners. I mean, we had the Project of the Year, Jake Bunter and Jeff Smith with the Emergency Communications did a great job on implementing that throughout the county. It's got good press and past stories about how we were able to do it quickly and at low cost.